Okay, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Town Council meeting for September 12th, 2011. If you'd all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Mr. Dolan?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In observance of yesterday, the 10-year anniversary of 9/11, I'd like to just have a moment of silence for the men and women that are serving abroad, protecting us, as well as here at home and abroad, and also for the men and women and family members of people that were tragically killed on 9/11 in 2001. Thank you.
Please be seated.
Okay, we'll go right to public comment. Meg, you're first on the agenda. You'd care to join us? You have someone in tow?
I do.
How you doing?
I'm well, thanks.
Good.
Good evening, thank you for having us this evening. Next to me is Kathleen Gardner. She is, with upon your approval this evening, she will be our new deputy town clerk, tax collector. Kathy comes to us with some experience from the city clerk's office in Manchester, so she will add some benefits to things that we haven't really had a chance to really get into, like archiving and those types of things, that she has a little bit more experience. So, we're gonna pick her knowledge on that stuff, and then we're gonna give her some of our knowledge here. So, we're looking very forward to having her onboard, and looking for the approval from the council.
Excellent.
Counsel?
All set. Joe, Tom?
Welcome.
Thank you.
I want to say welcome aboard. I believe we approved this a while ago, so I think that's just a formality from here. But, thanks for coming in and meeting us, and welcome aboard, and hopefully you'll like it, and hopefully we can get some information from you on how to do things better.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure you'll like working for Meg.
Yes.
We make a motion that we accept Kathleen Gardner as the deputy town clerk, tax collector.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Shade votes affirmative for a zero. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure she'll be seeing you in Town Hall, so...
I'm sure she will.
Unfortunately.
She won't be running for your office like you do. Not again! Okay, anyway, back to work here. Okay, that's it for the business part of it. Are there any comments, commentary? Oh, wait a minute. You better have your resident hat on.
I'd be very, very afraid. No, I don't have my resident hat on. I have my very proud director of cable services hat on.
Okay.
And unfortunately, Drew has another commitment on Monday evenings at this time, so he wasn't able to come.
That's called Patriots football. I know where he is. I think I'm playing him tonight.
Really? But Drew won a very prestigious award this year, and I wanted to share it with you. It's the Hometown Video Awards, which is part of an international conference that's held annually, and he won it for a documentary that he did for the Veterans Day tribute. And here's his plaque, I already showed it to him. But, it's, like I said, it's international, and that means that the majority of people are from the United States, but we have people coming from all over to this conference and entering this video festival. So, it's quite an accomplishment.
Very good.
I'm gonna put this on the wall with some of our other ones that we got in the past.
Very nice. Well, thank you very much for sharing.
Congratulations to Drew.
Very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Drew. That's a good accomplishment. Thank you, Dottie.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other public comment? Mr. Douglas?
Mr. Douglas? Glenn Douglas, Six Over, Look Ave. I just have a couple, quick ones. Occasionally, I get a lot of phone calls. People ask me, "Why does this work? How's this work?" I've gotten a couple in the last few weeks, and all of them have been Town Council-related, and I usually go to the website and look up the old minutes. But, for some reason, someone decided or to take off everything from 2005 till 2009. Any chance we can get that stuff put back?
Yeah, I've made a request already. I'm not sure where we're at with that.
Dave?
I'll check tomorrow.
Thank you. That's kind of an ongoing thing, so I remember we had talked about that before, so if they could hop on that and get that result.
Sure.
Yep. Is it all the minutes?
It's all the minutes.
Yeah.
No, I think, I think '09 to '11 are there, but I was looking for something back from 2006, and that's when I noticed it. The other question I had, because I got three or four people that called and asked, the town treasurer resigned, and we have a deputy treasurer? Is that? Nope. I mean, I never heard of a deputy treasurer before, and I told them I would ask, so I'm asking.
Dave?
Sure. State law allows communities to appoint deputy treasurers who are nominated by the town treasurer and confirmed by the town council. And John Connolly was confirmed by the council back in April of 2007, so he's been a deputy town treasurer. And state law stipulates that when a town treasurer is unable to execute his duties either by sickness, absence, or resignation, the deputy takes over the responsibilities until the next town meeting, not until the expiration of the term. So, I think in March, there'll be a one-year, one-year left on the, so in March, there'll be an election for one year, and then in March of 2013, there'll be a three-year election up for the voters.
Okay. That was it. All right. Thank you, Glenn. Okay, anybody else? I'm gonna have a quick gavel. We've got a Patriots game to get to. Okay, thank you. Okay, council, we're gonna, I got a motion to go into a public hearing.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we are now in public hearing for zero. Shade votes affirmative. All right, we have ordinance 2011-07.
Motion to waive it, reading?
Motion to waive the reading. You may want to read that one. Do we read this already?
Thought we did.
Okay, all right. All right, so we can go right into the discussion, I guess. So, I get a motion to waive it? You get a second, okay. Motion and a second. All right, so, discussion. We have, we have this ordinance in front of us. And we have safety concerns from the Conservation Commission regarding target and skeet shooting in the Musquash. And they are looking to address this by putting this ordinance in place. So, who wants to start it off?
I have a question.
Sure.
Dave?
From what I read, this ordinance applies to target and skeet shooting, correct?
That's correct.
So, is hunting currently permitted on the Musquash?
And will continue to be.
That's correct. And will continue to be?
That's correct.
With guns, would be?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, this would only limit it, this would only limit firearms on target shooting and
That's correct.
Skeet shooting.
Right.
Is that your one question?
That's my question.
Okay. Joe?
I don't know, I think this is a fundamental, for Second Amendment issue here. I don't think we can really do this as a Town Council. I don't feel comfortable taking the rights of the people away from them. I don't see much difference between target and hunting. And hunting's legal all year round, if it's coyote hunting. So, I don't really see that this makes much sense. So, I wanted to start there.
Okay.
Get some discussion.
Tom?
Yeah, I think we've gotten some legal advice to address the issue. Maybe Dave could help share, summarize that.
Sure. First of all, our town attorneys reviewed the matter and said it is a matter of policy for the Town Council to decide. You would not be restricting anybody from carrying firearms, but you cannot restrict them from doing on municipal property. But, the information we received from our town attorney is he doesn't believe it was the intent of the legislature that the Town Council could not regulate the use of firearms on town property. No town would be able to set aside land for conservation or recreation if those two uses were incompatible with the discharge of firearms. And Bart says there currently is no guidance from Supreme Court, and he cannot advise his towns that they have no control of the discharge of weapons on their property. For example, there are regulations regarding the discharge for municipal purposes next to schools. However, for example, currently, someone could target shoot at Continental Park, and there are no regulations prohibiting that. Now, the council looked at the issue of hunting several years ago on the Musquash, and it was universally believed that hunting should be allowed in that area. And when you have hunting season for most of your game, it's a specified time except by coyotes, so there are signs posted, and folks are advised that you can expect to see hunters out in the Musquash during this particular time. So, you know, they make a decision whether to recreate in that land, on that land during that period or not. So, this, so Town Council has advised that it is an allowed police power of the council, should you choose to do so. Chief Hart has told me that they've received nine complaints over three years, not a significant amount. So, from 2008 to 2011, they received nine complaints about shooting. Unknown whether all those were at the Musquash, or there's a couple of shooting ranges that are not very distant from the Musquash. Those noises might have been coming from those areas as well, but that's what Chief Hart reported this afternoon.
Okay.
And in addition to being unknown where they're from, I imagine it was unknown what type of shooting, if it was skeet shooting, target shooting, or hunting?
That's my understanding in most of the cases.
Isn't there, isn't it also that they have to be outside of 100 feet or something from walkways and paths?
300.
So, my problem is that how, you know, we're talking about target and skeet shooting. I think one of the letters stated it best that I received, how could that be more, I mean, how could that be more harmful than something that's moving, a moving target? You know, I mean, at least, I mean, you're almost thinking about it like target and skeet shooting would be, well, target shooting is stationary, you know, and it's less chances that you're gonna hit something that's not intended to be hit, you know? So, if we're already allowing hunting, I don't see why we wouldn't allow target or skeet shooting. Doesn't make sense to me. So, anyway, that's just my opinion.
Well, you know, nine complaints over three years, and we don't know, you know, nine complaints of shooting over three years, and there is a shooting range in the area. So...
I mean, I just think it's, you know, this is, I mean, well-intentioned, you know, but I just don't see this as being practical. We're not stopping shooting in the Musquash. I mean, if the Conservation Commission wants to post notices to people that there may be shooting going on here, I think that's helpful. But, I just don't see this as an effective way of dealing with a safety problem that, I'm not even sure that there is a safety problem, but even if there is, we're not, I would imagine, addressing the larger issue. Is there a way to distinguish the difference between target shooting and hunting? The blast is the same, right? So, when they, when somebody calls the police, I mean, how do they know that somebody's not shooting coyote? So, just some, just some common sense thoughts that I...
It's reasonable. Tom?
Yeah, the issue of safety is, is an issue that, with target shooting, that should be addressed. And the question is, what is the safety issue? Let me try to explain some of it. I have quite a bit of experience with target shooting and with safety around target ranges and so forth. Let me preface it by saying, however, that one of the dangers of gun ownership is having inexperienced shooters. And they can hurt themselves, and they can hurt others. So, one of the things about gun ownership is gun owners need to use their weapons, and they need to practice with their weapons. And one of the best ways to practice is by target shooting. And the last thing anybody wants to see, including the NRA or any other gun advocate group, is someone either choosing to defend themselves or hunt and never having practiced with their weapon. If that's the first-time use, that can be kind of scary, and it can be unsafe. So, I think we want to encourage target shooting in order to get that experience with gun owners under their belt. So, having said that, let me, let me help understand what, help the audience understand what some of the danger areas are. And this comes, what I'm looking at is from the Pistol-NZ organization under range construction. When, when shooters are shooting at targets, the real danger is downrange from the target. And that is usually caused by overshoots, which are shots that, as self-explanatory is, that might be a shoot over the target, or ricochets, which hit an object and deflect to the right or to the left or up. And what this definition here says about range danger, or target range danger, is that downrange area, that fired projectiles or subsequent ricochets are able to leave the target range area. And these, that those fired projectiles and subsequent ricochets may not be contained within that, that target area. The, there are a lot of recommendations on constructing, you know, proper areas to go target shooting. Some of the definitions, as I mentioned, an overshoot is defined as a bullet or projectile that carries over or beyond a backstop that was intended to stop it. By definition, an overshoot projectile will not have struck any downrange object before traveling beyond the backstop. And ricochets are bullets or projectiles that have struck a surface or object and had their trajectory altered as a result. The safety area, if you think of a target range, where shooters are shooting towards a target, if you think downrange and call that the safety area, the area that's downrange from the target that they're shooting at, the purpose of this safety area is to provide a buffer zone between the range's shooting activities and local human activity. It provides an area in which overshoots and ricochets can land without causing harm. In general, human activity is any safety zone, in any safety zone should be avoided. In other words, that area downrange from where the target is, there shouldn't be humans in there for safety reasons. Safety areas shouldn't overlap into areas of human habitation or regular human activity. Human habitation and regular activity are defined as the presence of dwellings, buildings, businesses, or human activity sites, such as camping or trail walking and so forth. So, there are proper ways to construct a target range, especially focused on the backstop to prevent projectiles or bullets from escaping downrange into the safety area where human activity may be occurring. And when you, when we construct a backstop, the core of it should be a solid material, including soils, rocks, rock or asphalt. And if the backstop is composed of hard materials, it should have a one-meter-thick layer of soil covering to absorb the projectiles. Oftentimes, around target ranges, earth berms are created, and that helps ricochets from traveling to the right or to the left, and also helps prevent people from walking into the area where target shooting is, is occurring. Now, I'm primarily talking about single projectile shooting. Most often, it's with lead or lead substitute bullets encased in a full-metal jacket round. What I'm not typically talking about right now is skeet shooting, which is part of the ordinance in front of us. But skeet shooting is, is most often done with a shotgun, and construction of a skeet shooting target range is typically aided through the use, through the help from the Amateur Trap Shooting Association and the National Skeet Shooting Association, which I guess will provide consulting services if we want to construct a skeet shooting range. Now, what are we talking about in terms of distances for the safety area beyond the targets? If you're talking about pistol shooting, let's say a nine-millimeter pistol, it's typically plus or minus 400 meters right to left, and 1,700 meters downrange is the, is the safety area. If you talk about rifle shooting, say a .308 Winchester, which about, has about the same requirements as a .3006 Springfield, again, plus or minus 400 meters right to left, and about 2,800 meters downrange. So, you can see that the safety area, or without a proper range, the safety area is significantly large and long, that would be unsafe for humans to be in when target practice is being undertaken. Now, the NRA does do some consulting on, on target ranges and target shooting, and that's, that's maybe a source of information that we might want to tap into. My expertise is somewhat dated to go along with my grade here. So, so my thought, where I'm going with this is that my thought is that we have quite a bit of town-owned property. We had a group come before us several years ago that wanted to fly those airplanes, if you remember their model airplanes. So, we, we granted them some space up...
Auburn Road?
Off Auburn Road, right. Excuse me, and they were required to do some, some work to create a little runway for themselves and so forth, and they put some, put some signage up, I think some gates, and to try to make sure people didn't, you know, people were safe when they were doing their, their activity. So, I think with the thought that target shooting is probably a good thing, it should be encouraged, since we do have fairly high percentage of gun owners in, in this area. So, we should encourage them to use their weapon and to target shoot and to practice, and to become even more proficient, and be able to learn through the target shooting process. I think that we might want to consider somewhere on town-owned property, a target range, and, and provide that at a very low cost, if not free, but a very low cost, because one of, one of the issues that we're faced with is the cost of going to, to some of the target, the established target ranges that are, that are in the local area now. It's not inexpensive to, to use them. But, something that would be low-cost, if, if maybe no cost to the target shooter, but it would, it would create the need to create, you know, to construct a target range, to design and construct it. I, some of my research did show that the NRA does have a grant program, and we can give that information to the, to the town staff. But, they have a, they have a 50-50 grant program, where they'll, they'll match monies for groups that want to create a target range. And I think that if we were to put this ordinance in place, that we ought to be willing to reconsider, if, if we were at some point to create this target range, we would reconsider the ordinance to accommodate the use of that target range, so that people could safely familiarize themselves with their weapons, practice, do the target shooting, and which would be done in a safe way, in a well-constructed, well-designed shooting area, that would also protect the safety of those who wanted to recreate on town-owned property, and in this case, specifically the Musquash area. So, how would we fund that? I mean, in this time of tight budgets, I probably wouldn't be the one to advocate that we would put something like this in the budget, but it gets really up to the, up to the taxpayers. If, if this is something that there, there is a desire for, we could, it could very easily be put on as part of the deliberative session and the, and the warrant process, and the taxpayers decide they want to fund that, then we could fund it as a, as a recreational project and provide that service to the community. So, in summary, my thought is, we ought to encourage target shooting, but we ought to do it safely, and we probably ought to do it with a, with an NRA-designed and constructed target range for that purpose.
Thanks, Tom. Okay, well, the council's permission, it is a public hearing, so do we consider going to public?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, if you want to come up and speak to it, please do, just say your name and address for the record.
Al Balbassal, 41 Hall Road. Thank you for this opportunity here, and this is like deja vu, deja vu about a few years ago. First of all, I live on the Musquash. I'm sorry, you know, the cohos there. And when I first bought my home, a couple of weeks later, I woke up, I thought I was back in the war zone. Didn't realize I bought in a hunting zone, okay? But, no problem, because then, they were there before me, hunters. I mean, it's unbelievable. There are people out there at times, shooting off target. I see some fathers sometimes with their kids, teaching them, you know, gun safety in different areas there. That's what we want here in town. In my opinion, and it's not no secret that I am an activist here in New Hampshire on Second Amendment rights and constitutional issues, if you take a look at the Fishing Game, okay, website, you're gonna see here that where it says, "Where can I hunt New Hampshire?" Now, I'm gonna use hunting, for example, because Counsel Dolan discussed on ricochet effect and other things on the round, on the, you know, I guess, maximum effective round, or where, where that ricochet goes. But, there's no difference if you're shooting a moving target when you're hunting, on the ricochet, on the round, on going, because I don't think everyone is a, probably wears expert, maybe like myself for many years, shooting rifles and pistols in the Marines. So, you know, that happens. But, the bottom line is, if you look at the safety record of New Hampshire, we're second to none. We encourage people going out target shooting, teaching the kids. We've got laws to protect these areas here. Now, I don't know if any of the cohos, or what is it, not the cohos, but the Musquash, was bought with federal or state grants, because there's ties that go along with that on recreation fund, you know, for fishing, hunting, and all that other stuff in those areas. But, let me just read something here real quick. And I, and I went through, you know, on some of the areas on the laws there, and it said, this is from the Fishing Game, "Based on a longstanding tradition, nearly all lands in the state of New Hampshire are open to hunting. The rule of thumb in New Hampshire is all state, federal, municipal, county, and private land is open to hunting unless it is posted against hunting." Of course, hunting, we already know the laws, you know, they're well-protected in the state of New Hampshire. And the legislative retained the authority on hunting in the state of New Hampshire where that can't be changed. But, I'm gonna get into the liabilities here in a minute, of what we're doing at the state outset real soon. But, it goes into, "However, hunting is a privilege granted, okay, by the landowner. It's not a right." Now, the reason I wanted to bring this up, because we talked about, was my notes when you were speaking, inexperience, ricochet, setting up a range, and on the property owners. If anyone hunts on a property, private property, they have to give you permission, first of all, posted, and then there's, they're protected on the liabilities of the state... all, post it and then there's, they're protected on the liabilities of the state of New Hampshire, okay, on the hunting. If anyone took the recreation tax, I believe, I'm not too full on it, maybe the town manager under current use, then they're protected, which many, many properties do to, to protect their land and let people go hunting, fish. This here, what we're doing today is a feel-good legislation or ordinance and why do I say that? I'm hearing rumors that there was a young kid out there shooting a TV up and somebody from the Conservation Commission seen this going on. My question is, why wasn't the police called in? And if there's a young kid who's, you know, shooting under sixteen without an adult, he's breaking the law. If he's shooting a TV, then there's litter going on here, needs to be made an example, but does that justify making a new ordinance on something that's not broken? If you go into chapter liability of the landowners and it comes under the town of the chapter two twelve, section two twelve, colon thirty-four, there's a loophole in there and somewhere along the line, this legislate, this bill had a trigger on it, meaning a, a dead date on it, which was effective January, until January first, two thousand and eleven. Senator Samborn is getting ready to fix this and I even asked the co-sponsor into fixing this legislation where it takes away a hundred percent of the liability to the towns, okay, to make sure that you're protected. So we, we know that there's an issue there and we're going to fix that. Right now, there's liabilities on your parking lot or there's liabilities on walking down the paths, somebody twists their ankle, it's not clean, there's, you know, stuff hanging over, there's so many liabilities. I mean, should we shut down ninety-three because of the amount of accidents that are over there? We're fortunate, thank God, we have a high safety record here in Londonderry. There are many gun owners and people, members of organizations, Gun Go New Hampshire, you know, you talk about NRA, we're all members of all these groups and they entice getting your kids out there to teach them gun safety. If you take away that target over there on a stationary position with a target even on a tree, like I could do on the side of my yard, because first of all, the law, you have to be permission, three hundred yards from a house, a dwelling, the laws are already there to protect this stuff. All we got to do is hold people accountable to the laws that are already in place. So I'm asking you to let, kill this here today, this feel-good legislation, maybe post some signs to let some of the hikers know that there are shooting that goes on. I know if you talk to the people of Londonderry Fishing Game Club, they're going to tell you, when they were there, there was no development. Now, all these houses moved around, there are more complaints, they want them gone, okay? They knew they were there, just like I moved in my neighborhood, knowing there, you know, not knowing there was hunting, but I learned knowing that that's their freedom, it was there before me, but the airport was there with the noise there. It's not for me and the freedom of the people, you know, that property there to, you know, to try to change it. So I'm asking you all, vote this thing down, let's move on and maybe put some signs and educate the hikers out there so there's good use for all and because ninety-nine point nine percent of, I should say a hundred percent in New Hampshire, from what I see on the safety record, are very safety-conscious and our record tells a story here in New Hampshire. But I would recommend you take a look at the different laws, you know, that are out there on protecting. Matter of fact, if you look at five oh eight, colon fourteen, on the limitations of actions, which is on liabilities, there's another one under chapter two twelve and it's the liability for landowners, section two twelve, colon thirty-four. We have laws that are out there protecting to make sure that each individual's constitutional right to shoot, hunt, protect themselves are there and that's all I have. Thank you. Sorry for taking up too much time.
No, it's all right. Thanks, Al. Anybody else?
Any questions?
No, we're good. Thanks, Al.
Nick Emmerich, that's Seventeenth Town Drive. I don't want to take much time because I do want to see the past myself.
It's all good. I was just kidding, that's a joke.
No. I think we all understand this is a common sense issue. What I did want to say is I thank you, Counselor Dolan, for bringing those statistics to us. What I don't agree with is, although I would love to have a range in town, I don't agree that we should fund it by taxes to do that. We have something that already exists, I don't think there's any reason to pay for something that already exists. That's really all I have to say. I mean, I understand everybody seems to know what they're talking about, it's a common sense issue, I think. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
There's one thing I forgot to pass, just for Counselor Dolan, on wetlands, I don't believe you're allowed to dig and put bums up and other stuff there because that is state, I mean, conservation land, just for clarification on seven.
I wasn't encouraging that we should disturb wetlands to do it.
All right. Glenn, you were coming up, did you want to speak?
Glenn Douglas, six overlook Ave. Just a quick clarification, it's obviously not in the ordinance, but I did read in the paper that this would also include bow, so according to the ordinance, you can still target practice with a bow, which hesitant to say this, but when you target practice with a gun, there's a bang, when you target practice with a bow, there's nothing, but you can still do that and as far as I understand, you know, the, the new bows have quite a bit of range, so I don't understand exactly what the safety is. The other thing, learning to use your weapon or gun or whatever you want to call it, if you hunt with a rifle, and I don't hunt, I do target practice, I used to target practice a lot, you have to sight in your rifle. You don't take it out of the box, look through the little crosshairs, aim at a little deer, pull the trigger and bang. You have to sight in your rifle. If you can't find someplace to sight in, you have no idea where that first round goes. So I'm assuming sighting in would also be banned during hunting season because you would in effect take a large piece of paper, hang it on something, shoot once, tweak in your sight, shoot again, tweak it in again, shoot the third time and theoretically you hit your target. So now you are going to require every hunter who buys a new scope or a new gun to join Londonderry Fishing Game, Pallan Fishing Game, anywhere between first year is about three hundred dollars, it's a hundred and fifty dollars a year to sight in their rifle once for the season. As far as the NRA safety ranges, Counselor Dolan mentioned, the Londonderry Fishing Game would like to build a new range on their property, I think they have a hundred and fifty-something acres. They went, they had it laid out according to NRA standards with twelve-foot sideburns, backstops, to all the NRA guidelines. When they went to the Conservation Commission, the comment from the commission was, "We have safety concerns with the range." They don't like the direction that it's pointed because it points into the Musquash. So therefore, even with an NRA-built range, there's still people going to have safety concerns. As far as a bunch of kids shooting in the Musquash or on West Road, no reasonable person target shooting is going to walk into West Road with a bunch of soccer moms and kids running around and pull out their forty-five and pin up a target and start shooting. And honestly, any kids that are going to shoot up a television set, I don't think they're going to pay attention to the ordinance anyway. They might get caught, but there's eight hundred acres out there. Chances are by the time the police got there, they'd be long since gone. I'm not for this, I think it's just one more chip in, in taking away something that apparently is illegal now, although I've heard that people have been threatened with arrest in the Musquash before, even though it is legal. The last thing, because this comes up a lot, as far as the legal advice from the town attorney, I know there's this client privilege thing, but we never get to see that, we just get to hear what the town attorney said and I'm not saying I don't trust Dave at all, but I'm the type that likes to read and this affects me and I'd really like to see that stuff published so that we get to know what our town attorney is saying, but I don't think this is a, is reasonable at all. You're, you're forcing people to join clubs, if they can't afford it, they're going to go out on the first day of hunting season with something that's not sighted in and have a problem. And I've been told that there are plenty of safe places in the Musquash to target shoot that have more than twelve-foot high sides on the sides and the back, so I don't see this as a safety issue at all.
Thanks, Glenn. Is there anybody else?
Hi, Bob Cherries, eighty-three, High Ranger Road. The issue I have is that we've got a bit of a broad brush that we use here from a legal perspective. If we implement the ordinance, we've really tied the hands now of our police department. What do they do? They show up in the Musquash, there's a father and a, and a child learning to hunt, maybe the child has discharged the firearm at legitimate game, could be hunting season. Any one of us decides that we don't believe that we saw the game, so we think it's target shooting. We call the officer, the officer is fairly restricted, right? What's his charge? Reckless discharge of a firearm. We now take a student, a child, we've just ended his college career, we've just ended his employment career over a very broad-based ordinance. What I would say is, if you want to have an ordinance, have an ordinance, but have an ordinance without doing harm. So please do no harm with the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This guy looks familiar.
Michael Toth, One Rabbit Run. I just wanted to, to say for the record that I'm hoping you guys act reasonably on this because, excuse me, based on everything I've heard, it really sounds like this is a solution that's really looking for a problem and, and that's not why an ordinance should be put forth. I agree with all the safety concerns as a responsible gun owner, I don't ever want to see anybody get hurt, I don't think anybody does, but this problem doesn't seem to exist, so I'm not, I'm really hoping that we're going to be reasonable and, and put this to rest and not vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else would like to speak on it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike Speltz, eighteen Sugar Plum. I think we need to distinguish between hunting and, and target shooting and the amount of risk that's involved with each. A hunter, it takes one shot and then three, one of three things happen, either he gets his game and collects it, he misses and the game is gone, or he wounds the game and he gets to have a nice walk through the woods following a blood trail. So to your question, Counselor Green, about telling the difference, it, it is easy to tell the difference between target shooting and hunting because of the number of rounds that are fired and, you know, each round carries some measurable degree of risk, however small. So I'm not sure that the ordinance has proposed maybe the, the, you know, the correctly formulated solution to this, but I, I think it is important to distinguish between hunting and target shooting and the reason I'm concerned is I think that if we allow target shooting in the Musquash, and that's not to say it might not be appropriate someplace else as Counselor Dolan suggested, but the, the Musquash has a dense network of trails in it, there are a lot of people that are out there and, you know, if you tell them that a .306 has a, a just sort of two-mile range, which is true, you, you could discourage people from using it. It's actually people there that keeps bad things from happening in the Musquash. When, when there are people out there, then miscreants go someplace else and we've, we've learned that with our problem with ATVs. So I think you need to figure out a way to control target shooting because it, it has a lot more significant impact on recreationists. I'm not talking the science-like technology of a range here, although I think what Tom presented was pretty compelling, I'm just talking about the psychological effect that it, that this use has on the multitude of other users of the Musquash. So, you know, like I said, this, this might not be the, the right, the right exact words for the ordinance, but, but I think we need to do this in a way that, that allows the other users of the Musquash a freedom from, from concern. The, the Londonderry Fishing Game Club did an excellent job in, in preparing their presentation for the Conservation Commission and yes, we do have safety concerns because if you lay out that twenty-eight, that almost two-mile stretch, it, it does overlap into the Musquash, but we did not say no, all we did was we asked for information and I think that, that they're going to provide it. But they went to great lengths to make that range safe and it, it would be instructive perhaps for you to talk with them about what they had to go through to design that range as, as far as they've taken it so far. It is, it is not a simple matter, as Counselor Dolan pointed out, to, to create a safe environment for target shooting. The other difference between target shooting and hunting is that hunting goes on in a very restricted and limited amount of time during the year and there are people that use the Musquash normally that, that stay out of there during hunting season, you know, and that, and that's their choice, that's fine, but, but they're not limited from being out there for the vast majority of the year and that, that's a difference again between target shooting, which can take place anytime, and hunting, which has to only take place during hunting season. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Okay. Anybody else? Nick? Go ahead.
Nick Emmerich, Seventeenth Town Drive. Couple things. Target hunting versus, target practice versus hunting. When you hunt, you can hunt in New Hampshire with a party of six, so you could be hunting with six guys, not that I do this, but it can be done. A deer walks by, theoretically you could have six shots at that deer, that can happen. So for target hunting, for target practice, it could be considered, a hunting situation could be considered target practice, which would then maybe get a call to the police to come and investigate, which could be target hunting. Secondly, I didn't write it down. That's it for now.
I do that, too. I bring post-its to a lot of places I go, that and notepads.
Sorry.
It's okay. Reed, did you, you had something?
I didn't.
You can keep going, I didn't want to skip over you because I, I must have missed you, I thought you wanted to talk.
Yeah, I did.
Okay. Do you want to come up or do you want to just?
We can just, we can just yell at you, we're not used to hearing.
Oh, okay. Reed Clark, Stonehenge Road, and she is referring to the fact that I used my, did not use my cane for twenty minutes practicing walking without it and my wife caught me. She was kind of annoyed. About this, first of all, about what Al said about hunting. I put no hunting signs on my ninety-five acres of land, all the way around, every twenty yards or whatever the exact thing is, and some deer season, they're torn down and I find people in my ninety acres and the reason I put the hunting, no hunting signs is because my grandchildren come and when I am not disabled as I am now, I walk out into the ninety-acre field and show them where things used to be when I was a child, okay? And they run to all over the place and scatter everywhere. So putting signs in the Musquash may be effective in the Musquash, maybe, I said, but they certainly aren't effective on Clark's property and I think that that is equally to blame. If they tear them down from Clark's property and I can't get the police out there in time to find out who the culprit is, every car that's parked along Stonehenge Road during, during hunting season, I call in and try and tell them to not park on Stonehenge Road or on the other side so that they can come in and hunt in my property. As far as what Tom Dolan said... As far as what Tom Dolan said, when I was younger, I could use a rifle. And I know that rifles tend to go up over an embankment or over a target and go, and keep on going for as many yards as he said, I've forgotten, 1,700 and 2,800, I think he said. And that, that is the only problem. If you go according to the NRA standards and keep it in a certain place, even in the musquash, I think that's a valuable thing. I'm not sure that I agree with a law that you just proposed, or that has been proposed, of just canceling it. But I would agree with a law that cancels it to a cer, to a certain area and by certain regulations. I think it should not be, I mean, I can take my kids, grandkids out in the musquash, too, and six, one deer came, may come by and six people may shoot at it, but one of them may miss the deer and hit me or kids. So the problem is, safety is whether nine people or 90 people or 900 people complain, safety is the issue here. And it seems to me that even in the musquash, you could set up a target area that would be NRA standards, it would be fine, rather than just a target here and two people without skills there, shooting at that target and going on each side and over. I just don't believe in that. I think it should be regulated according to the NRA standards somehow. Thank you.
Thanks, Reed. Okay, anybody else like to speak on it? Okay, all right, I'm going to bring it back to the council.
My wife could be watching.
Okay, so, councilors, are there any other concerns? Tom?
I would like to suggest to my fellow councilors that we do not move on this tonight, and we put this off. And I brought up a lot of technical information that might need some time to be absorbed. But also, I just heard a very good suggestion that perhaps we ought to get the Lundary Fishing Game Club in to talk about the proper construction of a safe target range, and let them talk to us, you know, about the process that they're going through, about, you know, what's safe, what's not safe. I know that Alan, if either Al or I had any of our troops target shooting ad hoc in the woods, we'd probably end up getting court martialed without it being done in a proper and safe environment, designated area, in other words, to do it safely when we were active duty. So I would recommend to my fellow councilors that, that we postpone taking any action on this until we've had a chance to digest some of the information that we've heard tonight, as well as having an opportunity to invite in some of the experts, like the, the folks that are working on the, on the new range at the Fishing Game Club.
Okay. Gentlemen?
Well, I guess my problem with that is, I think even Tom said, we're not, nobody's in favor on, on this council, and I certainly am. I'm using tax dollars to build a gun, to build a range. There's a, there's a private range in town, it's not cheap, but it's not inordinately expensive either. If somebody's a gun enthusiast, they can join that range if they want to. I don't, I don't see that the town should be in that gun range business. And, and with all due respect to everybody that voice a concern about safety, I understand that, but nobody's talking about what I imagine is the larger issue. Nobody's proposing banning hunting. And that's a moving shooter firing at a moving target with tremendous downrange capability and giving the musquash tremendous ricochet capacity. So if, if it's a safety issue, don't have guns there, but nobody's talking about that. We're talking about one type of shooting, target shooting, based on the report of one juvenile firing at a television. Against that, we've had the police telling us that over three years, we had nine reports of shooting heard that can't be differentiated between hunters, a target shooter, or...
Car backfiring?
Well, no, but the down, the, the gun range. The gun range. So I just see this as, you know, I mean, I understand it's a well-intentioned response to something that the Conservation Commission saw was wrong. And I, I'm not condoning what the kid did, but I just see this as not the right response to this thing. If, if he was shooting and he was underage shooting, he should be prosecuted. If he was alone and he should have been with an adult, didn't have a license for the gun or whatever he needed to have, he should be prosecuted. I mean, frankly, just from a practical police point of view, I don't see how this thing is going to be enforced. You know, there's going to be a civilian calling the police, there's a time lag till the police get there. You know, I, I guess you could make an arrest even without witnessing it, chief, but, you know, I'm not even sure about that.
By the way, I don't think it was, just to be accurate, it wasn't, they weren't shooting at a TV, I think it was a rather menacing stereo they were shooting.
Gentlemen, I'd like to, I'd like to suggest a motion, or change the ordinance of 2011-07 to strike Section 2B completely out of the ordinance.
This is the ordinance that's already there.
It's not there now.
That's what they want to add.
What I'm saying is not approve the addition of this piece of legislation.
So, yeah, so that's what that is, that's an add to the already existing ordinance. So if you were to do that, you're basically saying that you don't want to approve this ordinance.
Okay.
Okay. All right. My, my opinion of this is, it's quite simple. I'm big on personal responsibility. I've, I've done a lot of research on this, I've done a lot of reading, I've talked to a lot of people on this, and while I do understand that there may be some safety concerns, I don't think this addresses it. So as far as this piece of legislation, I do have a, I do have an issue with it. I don't support it as-is. I think it doesn't cover what, I, I agree, while it is good intentioned, I don't think that it's doing the right thing. So at this point, I'm, you know, this piece of legislation, as far as I'm concerned, doesn't really, doesn't work. Now, as far as, you know, Tom, as far as your idea, you know, if, if there are safety issues that should be dealt with, then yeah, we should, you know, maybe we should have Fishing Game in and talk about them. I don't know, and I'm not an expert at it, I'm not going to pretend to be, but I just, looking at this, I can tell you that I'm just not supportive of it, and for those reasons that I listed.
So we solved a little on the amendment? Make that official.
You can just, we draw, was there a second?
No.
No, so there's no second, so.
Good.
Doesn't go anywhere.
Dave, do we have to do anything official with this?
Well, you have an ordinance before you, you have to vote up or down.
Well, Tom.
Dave, how, would it be reasonable to be able to get, you think, Fishing Game in here for our next meeting? Is that too quick?
Probably too quick from their perspective, we can call tomorrow, but I suspect maybe too quick for them. And if we, if we don't approve this piece of legislation, if you decide, if there's a, if, if you come at it from a different, a different way, you know, is that still something that can be done at a future date?
Sure.
Okay. So at this point, as far as this piece of legislation, you know, I'm hearing two councilors and plus me not in support of it. So I think at this point, maybe we could take this and get it off the table? Or, I mean, what are, what else are the options? Is that, it's either reject it or approve it are our only options here?
Dave said anything we need to vote?
We can postpone it.
We'll postpone it. So it would be...
With, with Dave's efforts to try to make, make it work with regard to getting Fishing Game in here, I would, I would request the Item B postponed for one meeting.
Okay, so be it, so moved. So Tom's using, using his objection, is his ability to postpone it, so with that, we'll put it on to the next meeting and try and get Fishing Game in here, and we'll talk about it then, I guess.
Okay, so that'll be on September 19th? That's our next regularly scheduled meeting?
That's the next meeting, yeah.
Yeah, it's next.
He's using his counsel's privilege?
Yes, yes. Okay. All right, so that's all we need to do with that, Dave?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Okay, so what happened was, after the discussion and hearing from the input and the council talking back and forth, Counsel Dolan has requested that we bring it back for the next meeting, which is the 19th, to get a little more input from the, I guess Lundary Fishing Game? To get the Lundary Fishing Game to come in, answer some questions, concerns about the safety issues up at the musquash.
Any town councillor can use their privilege once on each amendment.
Delay to the next meeting.
Delay to one, to one.
So the next meeting is basically when there will be a decision on it because we can't keep postponing it. Go ahead, Al.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Since you're looking to bring in Fishing Game, can you ask Fishing Game if they have any safety videos that we can educate the hikers? Because the shooting, skeeting, all this stuff is going on all around the state, and it sounds like the issue is maybe some nervousness from the trail of the hikers, and maybe we can educate them on New Hampshire, you know, shooting and stuff, too, versus, because most hunters are already, they're going out there to safety qualify and they already understand the safety issues. But I think the trail guys might have an issue, they need that.
Okay. Well, again, Al, so like I said, you know, I recommend that next meeting, you get, you want to show up and you can talk about it and also voice your concerns, but we'll, we'll make the phone call to see if we can get Fishing Game in here and talk about it.
Dave, can we also find out if there's any restrictions based on any grants that were obtained to acquire the musquash or any of the pots to the musquash that prohibit us from passing such an ordinance?
Bob, did you have a question? I saw you put your arm up. Still in public hearing, so.
Thank you, Bob Sauer, Four Mountain Home Road. I'm just speaking as a citizen, but somebody who also encourages a lot of people to use the musquash, particularly hikers, but also hunters as well. I think, I don't, to Al, last point, I think the hikers are well aware of the issues of, of guns in the musquash, and I don't think there's really a need to educate them further. We do posted, the musquash is posted throughout hunting season, all the trailheads have hunting signs with all the dates on it, both for bow and for, for gun hunting. We encourage our members to wear blaze orange when they're out there in the, the hunting season. I don't think it's an education issue. I think it's, it's strictly a matter of figuring out the balance of how everybody gets to use this resource.
To coexist.
Exactly. But I don't think it's an education issue of the hunters, so I just wouldn't want the council to expend a lot of energy on that. There's other things that are more important for you guys to be expending energy on. Thanks.
Thank you, Bob. Okay. Chairman, I've been advised that I don't need to take back my motion because it wasn't seconded. Correct. Yes, sir. That is correct. Okay. Yep, go ahead, Reed.
You're doing it again.
Okay, Reed Clark again. I'd like Bob to tell me, Mr. Sauer, to tell me that how he keeps all the signs up in the musquash, and they tear them all down at Stonehenge Road.
Well, maybe you could take that one offline with Bob, I'm sure he'll be able to tell you.
His signs aren't saying, "No hunting," they're saying, "Hunting's happening now."
Oh.
Okay. All right. Well, that's it, we're going to move on to that, this will be on our next council meeting, so thank you for coming. Okay, Ordinance 2011-08, revisions to the municipal code, we'll let Dave take that.
This says, as we've stated previously, this is a continuing effort to review and revise all of our municipal codes. For approval this evening is Chapter 24 and Title 1, which is the remaining chapter within the cable television studio. And we really synthesized the, the regulations down to identifying the stations' general rules. There were a lot of explanatory information there previously, and we've, we've removed that and delegated, or recommending delegate that responsibility to the cable director to develop rules and regulations. Regarding Title 2, the Traffic Safety Code, we had Public Works and primarily the Police Department review that. And of the 10 different chapters, there are only two chapters that have changes. One is Chapter 2, Traffic Safety Committee. The previous iteration had a number of responsibilities dedicated to chairman, so that's been changed to make it more of a committee, similar to how the council operates under the charter and state statute. And the other significant change is in the miscellaneous provisions. Currently, the noise restriction hour is from 10:00 p.m. to 10:00 a.m., and they've been updated to reflect current norms to go from 10:00 p.m. to 7:30 a.m. on the, on the advice of the police prosecutor. The third change is in Title 4, and we've only addressed one chapter at this point, and that is, that those are changes to rewriting some code references in fire prevention. As you recall, during the deliberation of the FY12 budget, a number of inspection responsibilities were transferred from the Fire Department to the Building Division here in Town Hall to eliminate duplication of effort. And so this rewrite predominantly addresses that, allows us to proceed with those particular changes in the administration of, and enforcement of our codes.
Thank you, Dave. Yeah, I read through them and it did clean it up quite a bit. Kind of weird how some, some of them do get outdated, so.
Okay, council, we need to...
Does Chairman want to make a motion that we accept the ordinance as presented?
Second it.
All right, we get Counsel Dolan's motion and Joe's second. Any questions? Concerns? Joe? Tom?
Go to the public.
Okay. Anyone in the public have any concerns with the motion? We're going over municipal code changes to the town charter. Okay, seeing none. Okay, back to the council. I guess we'll bring it to a vote. All those in favor of Ordinance 2011-08 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries 4-0, Chair votes affirmative. All right. Ordinance 2011-09, relative to the rezoning of several lots to C2. Can I get someone to read that?
This is 2011-09?
Oh, okay.
You talking about?
Yes.
Okay, I'll do it for you. Ordinance 2011-09, an amendment to the zoning ordinance relating to rezoning map 15 lots 183, comma, 184, and 185 Mammoth Road, and map 13, 96B Rockingham Road to C2. Introduced 815, second reading 912, adopted 912. Whereas the Planning Board has received separate requests to rezone the above referenced parcels to C2, and whereas the Planning Board has recommended that the town council act favorable, favorably upon these requests, and whereas the request, requested rezoning would further expand the town's non-residential tax base as consistent with existing land use patterns and surrounding zones, now therefore being ordained by the town council of the town of Lundary that the town zoning ordinance be amended to reflect the rezoning of map 15 lots 183, comma, 184, and 185 Mammoth Road from C1 to C2, and map 13, lot 96B from AR1 to C2, to become effective upon passage by the town council.
Okay, you have a motion? Give me a second. It's not a discussion? Okay, motion and second.
Okay, motion and a second, council? Or should we get, Dave? Go get Andre here? Okay. Andre, where did you come from? You weren't here a minute ago.
Watching.
Oh, okay. Say no more. All right, why don't you, if you could, update us on what this is about?
Yeah, well, the first one, Mr. Chairman, the town council, the first one, the map 15 lots 183, 84, and 185 is off of Mammoth Road in the village area of Lunendary. And what they're looking to do is this, you know, make the zoning consistent throughout, you know, given that the use of the property has been used as a garage and therefore, and the applicant owns those three properties, therefore, and is surrounded by a C2 zone, the bore's all fit that it would be consistent with zoning in that area.
Yeah, I remember we discussed this before. Okay. Planning board has recommended it unanimously? Okay, good. Okay, Tom?
Andre, so this is changing it from C1 to C2?
Correct.
Can you just enlighten the audiences, what the primary differences are between a C1 and C2?
The C1 is more of the office-oriented, professional service-oriented type of zone. C2 is a more of a motor-oriented, travel, for the traveling public type of zone where, you know, you have your gas station, your gas station repair stations and things of that sorts, a little bit more intense use than a C1 zone. And this particular site, there is a, there's a existing garage on one of the parcels and therefore the zoning will be consistent with that, consistent and compatible with that particular use.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, a second. Andre's given us the briefing on it. Any concerns from the council on this? No. Joe? No.
Well, there was a, there's another parcel that, did you want to talk to, the one that's going from AR1 to C2?
Yes, I don't know if you have a copy of the picture of that, but this is right on the dairy, Lunendary town line at the, off Route 28, Route 28, right at the dairy, Lunendary town line. There is a sliver of land that resides in Lunendary that is zone AR1, but the whole area is pretty much zone commercial. And, and I think, given that this piece of land, if there wasn't a designated zoning district when the tax maps were created, whatever, I think we just called it Agricultural One. But in this particular instance, it's just a sliver of land, and in order to make this consistent with the zoning that's in the area, the board recommended that it be changed.
Obvious reasons on that one, huh? Okay.
It also allows the applicant to move forward with their plans with a zone that's consistent with their use.
Got it, okay. And that too is also approved unanimously?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. All right, back to the council. So we have motion, second, we have discussion. Public. Anyone from the public? Want to discuss it? Seeing none, okay. Back to the council. Thank you. All right, so I guess we'll bring it to a vote. All those in favor of ordinance 2011-09 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Chair votes affirmative, motion passes four zero.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Motion and a second. All those in favor of closing public hearing, by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Chair votes affirmative, four zero. All right. So we're going to old business. Appointments to the Public Safety Dispatch Services Study Committee. All right, so council, we have a list that we've been given from Margo over the last week with applicants that want to be appointed. So we, Dave, why don't you bring us up to speed? So we have four already on there and we need to pick three? Four. We need to pick four. Okay.
Yeah, you need to, two things. On the dispatch committee members, you need to pick four members of the public.
Mm-hmm.
And you also need to slot a town councillor.
Okay.
The police, the fire department representatives, captain, the fire department's captain Doug Cardwell, the police department's lieutenant Tim Jones, the budget committee is being represented by Lisa Whittamore and the school board by Steve Young.
Okay.
Do we want to wait until John can be here?
Yeah, that might be a good idea.
Yeah, I can tell you that I had a phone conversation with him and although we don't allow any proxy voting, he said that if the council was amenable to it, he would volunteer to serve on this, having, I guess he's got some experience in setting up regional dispatch centers in the past, so.
Okay.
For what it's worth, if you want to postpone it or take that.
Well, if we have a proxy and he doesn't, it's not like we're saying begging.
Right.
Okay. All right, with that said, then, I guess we'll bring it to the council for that part of it. We'll take it, I guess, by pieces first. Well, for the council liaison, Joe, are you okay with John doing it?
I was interested, but I think John has a lot of experience in the private sector with it prior, so I think I'll bend to that.
Sure, okay.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. And that sounds good to me. I wasn't aware of that, but if John wants to do it and he has time for it on his plate, absolutely. So consensus is, you okay with it?
Yeah.
Okay. So Dave, we've selected John, five zero, as the council rep to the...
Continuing the tradition of appointing the person who's not here.
Okay.
Five zero by proxy? Four zero.
Four zero.
You can do it by proxy.
That's right, four zero. And John votes in the, not here. Okay. All right, so we have, we have a list of applicants. How do we want to go through this?
On that, do you want to wait till John gets here?
Do you want to do that when he gets back?
We have more time to look through it.
Yeah.
It's only a week, so it's not going to, it's not going to hamper us. If the council wants to do that, you can defer that to your September.
Want to do that? Okay. So why don't we do that, Dave? Are you in next week or is that the...
No, Sue will be stopping the meeting.
Sue will be covering that one? Okay. All right, so why don't we do that, then? And that way, the whole council can, you know, select who we want to put on there. Okay.
What would you, we'll give you a spreadsheet for the next meeting as to all, if you're interested in their backgrounds, just so we can move across the line.
There's a question.
Do you have something to say?
I do.
You never talk.
Even though this was closed by, I think it was September 7th, I get more interest of people, do I think?
Oh, I think that, I think that... Oh, I'm fine with it, council?
More than Mary.
That's fine. More than Mary. That's good, that's fine. So, yeah, if you have any others, that would be great. Thank you. Okay. Appointments to the dog study park. Okay, so, so where are we on that? We said we're one person.
Do we get all? Do we need?
We need four, right?
No, it's a mess, we need seven. Need seven members of the public.
We've got the names too, right?
We didn't change the paper.
Okay.
Okay.
So, am I pulling up two of those?
Well, we currently have, do you want the names that we've...
Of course.
Dottie, do you have a recommended slate of seven?
Actually, I have six people who have declared their interest in serving, either through Margo or through me, and then I send them to Margo.
So we have a total of...
And a seventh one that I would like to discuss with you.
Okay, so we have a total of six that have volunteered so far?
Yes.
Seven vacancies, it looks like they all make the cut.
I think so.
That's what I would say as well, yeah. And for the seventh one, if you'd given just a moment, I was approached by someone who's an employee of the school district and does not reside in Lunendary, but is, has a very big interest in dogs and thought a dog park for Lunendary was a wonderful idea, but he wasn't sure whether or not the council would consider him as someone who could serve on the committee. I didn't know either, so I told him I would certainly ask you.
So it depends on the framework. Did we specify seven citizens?
No, you just have to love dogs.
I think that's what we did say. I think it was if you love dogs. Technicality speaking, I guess, but I think we probably should go with Lunendary residents.
Does our, does our order specify any...
It's a council prerogative, so, you know.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And that's why, that's why I brought it before you.
Seven members of the public, so I guess that...
The public's public.
It's an employee of the town, so, you know. Okay, so I guess you have a...
You have your seven.
Council's, okay. So there's your seven.
Okay.
So I guess we don't have to discuss the appointment process. You all made it.
Yeah, you got the names and that's all, we're all set.
And, so, when are you going to start up on your little mission?
What I'd actually do is like to tell the approved members of the committee that we're going to have a meeting on the 20th, 7 o'clock, at the access center.
And do you have emails and contact?
Margo has contact information and I have some as well, so we'll get together on that and make sure they all know.
Cool. All right. Thank you, Dottie.
Do we need to vote or something?
Do we need to do anything?
Need to vote on it?
There will be consensus.
Consensus, okay.
Consensus, and just so the record reflects, Margo will put the names in a minute, so.
Sure, okay. All right, can I have a motion then, to accept the applicants?
Motion to accept the applications.
Sorry. Okay. A motion and a second?
All those, plus Dottie's add.
And Dottie's add.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So let the, let the record indicate that.
Thank you.
The district employee that wants to...
Now, I don't want to make you feel bad, but I'm going to go home and I can watch the full...
Oh, that's nice, thanks.
Can you tweet us the scores? Can you tweet the scores to us, please?
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Chair votes affirmative, four zero, to accept everyone that had applied to the Doug Study Committee, Dog Park Study Committee. Okay. We are back to resolution 2011-14, relative to the transfer of an easement to the Rockingham County Conservation District.
I'll read it.
Sure.
This is a first reading. Actually, the first reading was last month on 815. This is a second reading. Whereas the provisions of RSA 36A4 allow the Conservation Commission to receive gifts of money and property and to purchase property, and property and gifts to be managed and controlled by the commission, and whereas the town purchased a conservation easement in 2002 on 20.88 acres at Sunnycrest Farm in cooperation with the Farm and Ranch Land Protection Program. And whereas the Rockingham County Conservation District is better positioned to provide monitoring services to ensure that the easement provisions are maintained, and whereas the commission has voted to recommend the transfer of the easement to the Rockingham County Conservation District and retain executory interests to ensure that the goals of Lunendary's open space program continue to be met, now therefore be resolved by the Lunendary Town Council that the Conservation Commission's recommendation to transfer the easement, the Farm and Ranch Land Protection Program easement, to the Rockingham County Conservation District is hereby approved and the town manager authorized to execute the necessary documents to complete this transaction.
Okay, we have Tom's motion and I need a second?
Second.
Okay, for discussion. So we have a motion and a second. Okay. Do we want to talk, the council want to bring this up, or do we want to talk to the Conservation Commission?
I have a question, I don't know if we're supposed to...
All right. Deb, Mike, do you guys want to field some questions? Thank you. Okay.
Deb Levens, 105 Gilchrist Road, Conservation Commission?
Okay.
Would you like a little history?
Sure.
Okay. Early in the, this decade, well, the last decade, actually, we were working in conjunction with the town offices, the town planning department, and the Conservation Commission, and, and the packages were coming together in different, a different way than they have been in the last few years. I cannot exactly remember how it was, it was broken down into three phases, and because of the way the Farm and Ranch Land Protection Program requirements were put together, we, on this phase one, we did one set of actions. The government's changed everything every year, so as they went along, they started asking for more things and it became necessary for us to work with Rockingham County Conservation District to, in order to get the grant, they had to hold, be the holders of the easement, and we were the executory owners. So we have one phase that we still own the easement and, or hold the easement, and two phases where Rockingham County holds the easement. It's been our desire over the last several years to package these together so that the management is all of one piece. Right now, they're, when they started doing this for us, they were covering some of the management issues without charging us for them. There were some issues with staffing at RCCD, so it got postponed, and as you all know, things take time. So we finally got this pulled together and have, and we had to get permission from the feds in order to do this, too. So if we have this package together, Rockingham County Conservation District will hold the easements, monitor the land, report to us, give us copies of all the monitoring, which they're already doing. Basically, they'll do it for all three parcels instead of just two out of the three.
Okay. Thank you for the update. Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
What executory interests do you retain? Just to write if they don't do anything to take it back?
If they do it wrong, we can take them back.
And is that a big to do, if you guys see that they're not doing something?
Let's put it this way, we've been working together for 10 years and they, and they're good. That's their job. That's their job, and they manage a lot of properties for other communities, other private interests, you know, so I think, the way things are now, there should not be any, any issues.
Dave, I just have a question on the wording of a resolution.
Uh-huh.
It says, the Conservation Commission's recommendation to transfer the FRPP easement to the RCCD.
Right.
How can, how can you transfer somebody else's easement?
That was the language in the, what the motion was made at the Conservation Commission.
Is it, is it not the FRPP?
Did that come from the letter that was, it came from the letter that the NRCS guy sent to us, I'm pretty sure, probably.
Mr. Chairman, may I enlighten?
Of course. Yes, please.
Self, Conservation Commission, in that phrase of the resolution, FRPP is being used as an adjective. In other words, it's not the FRPPs.
JR easement? It's the Conservation Commission's other town's easement?
Right, it's the town's easement.
Oh, okay.
If you read the easement, it's, it goes from the owners to the town, but it was funded with FRPP funds. That's why we had to go back to them and get permission to make this assignment.
Got it. That doesn't hold you up on the transfer, that's fine. Okay. Fine with me, yep. Yep. Joe?
What's up?
You good? Tom? Okay. 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 All those in favor of resolution 2011-14 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Chair votes affirmative, four zero, motion carries. Thank you very much, Deb.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Okay. Let's see. Okay, let's see. Resolution two thousand eleven dash oh-four, oh wait, I'm sorry, skip that one. Two thousand eleven oh-six, that's not on the...
That's been postponed. Mr. Merrill requested that item be moved to November seventh.
Okay.
So we'll schedule it at that time.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Okay, letter E. Okay, read. The distribution of conservation funds to purchase a conservation easement, five eighty-seven Mammoth Road, they postponed it, the owner did, until our meeting November seventh.
November?
Yes, so that's got pushed out a little bit. Okay? All right, resolution two thousand eleven dash oh-four, can I get someone?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept resolution two thousand eleven dash four, which is the discontinuation of Scobie Pond Road. We've had first reading back in March, we've had subsequent readings in April, two in May, and I would recommend the council waive this current reading for this corrected version.
I have a question on that, though.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I thought they, this is the one that the, they gave up, they didn't want to do it anymore, and now it's coming back? I mean, I don't understand, I thought this was gone.
This is the one on Scobie Pond Road, where they requested the town waive the entire length, ended up, the council approved a very short section. What this resolution simply does is properly reflect the, the plan, which shows that small portion was the council approved to be advantaged.
Oh, okay, right.
This is not, this is not the one over on Mammoth Road, this is one over Scobie Pond.
But this tightens that up, then.
It just, it just cleans up the language, so historically, people look back at it, they'll...
It's not the other one, the larger company?
That's correct. It's not that.
During that discussion, I remember we specifically said that once this is done, and you have the exact coordinates, make sure that everything reflects it.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't another one that...
It is not, it is not.
Back and forth a hundred times, right?
Yeah, okay. Okay, so this is a cleanup of it. So we have a motion from Tom, can we get a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No.
Tom?
No.
Okay. All right, we have motion and a second. All those in favor of resolution two thousand eleven dash four signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, four-zero, chair votes affirmative, motion passes. Okay, that's it for old business. We have new business. Relative to distribution of capital reserve funds for highway trucks, order two thousand eleven dash sixteen.
Isn't in the packet.
It's not in the packet.
Dave.
Only a fifteen, yeah.
It's not there?
It goes to fifteen.
I apologize.
You don't want the money then, huh?
I'll read it, I'll read it since I have a copy.
Yeah, it'll also be on me if I don't get the...
Order, order number two thousand eleven dash sixteen, an order relative to the distribution of capital reserve funds, first reading, oh nine twelve, two thousand eleven, adopted oh nine twelve, two thousand eleven. Whereas the town of Londonderry created capital reserve funds to purchase highway department equipment and trucks, and whereas the town needs to replace a highway truck and one-ton truck, both with dump body accessories and a pickup truck, and whereas it has been determined that sufficient funds are available to replace this equipment, and whereas the cost to purchase this equipment totals two hundred and twelve thousand three hundred and thirty-four, is therefore ordered by the Londonderry Town Council that the town treasurer is hereby directed and authorized to expend two hundred and twelve thousand three hundred and thirty-four from the highway truck capital reserve fund for the equipment listed on the attached and further, to authorize the town manager to sign such documents as required to complete said transactions. So moved.
Second. Okay, motion and a second. Discussion? Tom?
No.
Tom?
No, I'm all set.
Joe?
All set.
This is Fianos?
I don't know.
Can I use my council's exemption on this?
He's back.
Is he? Okay. All right, motion and a second. All those in favor of order number two thousand eleven dash sixteen signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, four-zero. Okay, resolution two thousand eleven dash fifteen.
I can read it. Resolution two thousand eleven dash fifteen relative to the Leach Library Technology Plans, first reading today. Whereas the town council established a goal to review all town regulations, ordinances, practices, and procedures in an effort to identify and eliminate inefficiencies and outdated processes, and whereas this process involves maximizing the use of technology in the organization, and whereas the council is interested in learning about Leach Library's vision incorporating technology and electronic offerings such as eBooks to residents and other operating efficiencies such as a self-service checkout. Now therefore be resolved that the Londonderry Town Council requests that the Londonderry Leach Library trustees submit as part of its FY thirteen budget requests, a plan outlining changes to its business model, operations, and annual budget resulting for increased usage of eBooks.
Motion?
Motion to adopt.
Tom's got a second. So Tom and Tom. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? Tom?
I think it's a good idea.
Yep.
I think it's a great idea. Yeah, long overdue, absolutely.
All right. Okay, all those in favor of motion, resolution two thousand eleven dash fifteen signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Chair votes affirmative, four-zero. Motion passes. Okay. All right, we're into approval of minutes from council meeting eight fifteen eleven. Can I get someone to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. I didn't see any, anything in there, everything looked fine to me, so, motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes of eight fifteen eleven signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Chair votes affirmative, four-zero. Okay, liaison reports, we'll start with Mr. Dolan.
Last Conservation Commission meeting, I was at prior to the last reading, so I guess I don't have anything to report.
Okay. Joe?
I don't have any.
Tom?
The planning board, last week, there's some speculation that we'll be getting something from Woodmont in October, but also, as I mentioned to Dave, there was an action item from May regarding the PUD ordinance and getting some planning board input on whether there should be changes to that, but there's been nothing for the planning board to really even look at yet, because it's been all conceptual discussions and really no PUD application yet, so that may get delayed. I think it was supposed to get reported back October third.
Yeah, and art will be on October third to essentially relay what you just stated, and also try to give some idea of the timeline of Woodmont, so then the planning board made a better position to advise the council on any recommended changes to the procedure.
That's, that's it, you got two? Okay. And I have nothing. Okay, town manager report.
Just one thing, Sue will be staffed from the meeting next Monday, I'll be at my annual conference Monday and Tuesday, so...
Miami?
Yeah, yeah. Try Milwaukee. It's probably snowing there already.
I knew it was with an M, I couldn't remember.
Milwaukee, not Miami. So Sue, Sue will be staffed in the meeting for next Monday evening. And then we have, we, if, I've heard back from only a couple of you, so, but we have scheduled a twenty-sixth workshop regarding the Hemlock Street Incident.
Yep.
And then we have a non-public on a couple of different issues.
Okay. All right. So the Hemlock, that's going to be a public meeting?
That would be a public, that's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Let's see. Before we go into board committee, I just, we always seem to skip over the meeting schedule, I just want to make sure we put it out there. So the town council meeting, the next one we have will be next week, September nineteenth here, seven o'clock, and then after that, October third at seven o'clock. And if I'm not mistaken, we'll be getting dangerously close to budget season then?
Yeah, budget season will start.
Already?
I don't have the date in front of me, but I think the workshop is sadly, I think